Good afternoon. I'm Kim Melnick, Vice Chair of the School Board, and I call this informal workshop to order. The administrative informal and workshop session of this meeting of the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach, Virginia is hereby convened at 4:00 on this 12th day of October 2021 pursuant to the Virginia State Health Commissioner's order of public health emergency state ride requirement to wear masks in K-12 schools issued August 12, 2021, and the Virginia Acts of Assembly Number 1303, Chapter 456, and the Center for Disease Control and Prevention's guidance for K-12 schools, and the School Board's 2021-22 reopening plan adopted August 10, 2021. It is determined that physical distancing will be used in school board chambers as a health mitigation strategy. Therefore, there will be limited public seating made available on a first-come, first-served basis beginning shortly before the administrative informal and workshop session of the School Board meeting. Members of the public will also be able to observe the School Board meeting through live streaming on www.vbschools.com, broadcast on VBTV Channel 47, and on Zoom. It is the School Board's protocol to break at 5:30 to prepare for the formal session School Board meeting to begin at 6:00. At 5:30 PM, the School Board will conclude its administrative informal and workshop session of the meeting unless the School Board votes to continue until 5:45. The administrative informal and workshop session will conclude no later than 5:45 to allow the School Board and the School Administration to prepare for the formal session of the School Board meeting at 6:00. Madam Clerk, will you please announce those School Board members in attendance?
Thank you, Vice Chair. I present in chambers is Ms. Melnick, Ms. Anderson, Ms. Felton, Ms. Franklin, Ms. Hughes, Ms. Manning, Ms. Owens, Ms. Riggs, and Ms. Weems.
With approval for the Board, I would like to request that we just postpone administrative matters and reports until after the Chair arrives, if it pleases the Board. Any objections? Okay, excellent. Then we will move forward with Item B, WHRO Services Update. Welcome.
We're functioning. There we go. Yep. Okay, hopefully this works. Thank you for allowing me to speak with you today. We come to you every couple of years and give you an update in your investment with WHRO. You have hard copies of this report, but I'm going to focus on the video or the screens and not so much the reports today. Everything I'm going to talk about is in the report, so if you want to go into the detail, it's all there. But I want to do a quick summary for you of what's in that report so you know what's going on. If you're new to the Board, Virginia Beach is one of the 21 school divisions that literally own the license to the station. We're the only media station in the entire country owned by a collaboration of school divisions, so we're very thrilled that Virginia Beach is a part of that. And I should mention that Dr. Spence not only works with all the superintendent group, but he's also on my governing board. So, Dr. Spence, I want to thank you for being on the governing board, which oversees everything we do when it comes to a WHRO. So, what are we providing? Services. E-Media VA is a digital repository in this world of COVID and virtual learning. This service has digital learning objects, tens of thousands of learning objects, videos, audios, games, apps, lesson plans, documents, anything you can digitize. It's all correlated to the Virginia standards of learning, and it's free to every teacher, every student, every parent, public, private, homeschooler, all available. We have a contract with the Department of Education. We've had this contract for about a decade now, and it's available, and your division used it quite a bit during this past couple of years with all the virtual work we're doing. We also provide a lot of professional development. You'll see some of the courses we did last year for teachers throughout the Commonwealth. Of course, it's been mostly virtual for the last couple of years. Your online courses. We have developed for you 28 online, mostly high school courses. I won't read through the whole list. You can see them there, but they're core curriculum. We make the course. Think of us as a manufacturer. We give you the course. You put them in your LMS, and then you determine how you want to use the courses. It could be fully online. It could be blended, flipped, all sorts of models, whatever you decide. They're intended to be used with teachers, so we're not pushing the teachers aside. But this is, you know, again, we've got about 28 courses. I should mention that next year, we hope to offer up the environmental science course. That's something the superintendents were requesting. We're very proud to be a part of the creation of the state's first African-American history course. The governor, along with the Department of Education, asked WHRO to be a part of that effort. A year ago, it was 18, our last year was 16, school divisions kind of beta-tested it. Now, of course, it's available to every school within Virginia. We're very proud to be a part of that effort. During COVID, the superintendents reached out and said, "Look, online learning doesn't work really well for kindergarten, first, second, third grade kids. Can you help us out, WHRO?" Then Dr. Lane from the DOE called and said, "You know, a lot of kids don't have access to online. They just don't have online capabilities at home. Can you help us?" Of course, in Virginia, everybody has access to public TV, so what we created was Virginia TV Classroom. We worked with about 64 teachers around the Commonwealth, four from this division. They did, in effect, Zoom lessons. They emailed them to us. We turned them into a TV show, and two weeks after the pandemic really started, we were doing three hours every day of instruction from K through 7 for about nine months. We were offering that service, and every public TV station in Virginia carries. So, everybody in Virginia had this service for about nine months during the first, again, about nine months of the pandemic. Here's a brief, little video.
Attention, parents and students. Virginia TV Classroom is making it easy again for you to learn in your living room. We're back for season two. Students kindergarten to seventh grade tune in weekdays to see teacher-led and SOL-aligned instruction. It's Virginia's teachers teaching on TV. Watch Virginia TV Classroom and learn more.
Beginning September 14 at 11 on...
So, we were very happy to be able to provide that service statewide during a crazy time when the pandemic first started up. Virtual Virginia, you're, of course, all familiar with that service. We actually started it about 14 years ago. Today, we handle all the technology side of it, the software, the systems, technical support, those kinds of things as well. We have a big focus on environmental education. We received a grant from Jane Batten to do environmental work. We now have an environmental science van that comes out and works with children. Lots of services. I mentioned the course that we're about to come out with. So, a lot of working in the space of environmental science. We celebrate kids, and we love celebrating kids because, you know, the football and basketball players, they get celebrated all the time. We like to celebrate the smart kids. I'm going to fly through these, but we have a PBS Kids Writers Contest. We have our spelling bee that you've been involved in, the Great Computer Challenge. And now, one of the things that we find very important is focusing on students getting ready to work. For a couple of years, we were worried about focus on the on-time graduation rates. Those have dramatically improved over the last few years. So, our focus has moved towards students who are leaving high school and need to get a job. And in particular, we've been focused on women who might want to get into fields not traditionally, that they might think they're not allowed to be a part of. So, we have a quick video of a girl who is becoming, well, you'll see.
Hey, ladies. Check out my cool t-shirt. And check out Pure Red Swan.
I am strong.
You got that right.
I think on my feet.
We love a challenge.
I have mad skills.
I work like a girl.
Are you ready for this?
So, really trying to focus on jobs that are available in the region and sometimes non-traditional jobs for women. We have a series called, Ms. Martha reads, I'm not going to play the video right now, but I will say that we also have a series called Education Now. If you watch WHRO at all, you'll see those Education Now spots, what they are. We come to each division, and we do a video 30 to 60 seconds about some of your best practices. They're all dated, frankly, because of the COVID, we weren't able to come out. So, even with Dr. Spence, we need to work with you and your team to update that video to make sure we've got the most recent thing you want to brag about on our air. We're going to skip right through that video. Nope, we're not going to watch that. Sorry. We do a lot with family and early learners. All the details are in your packet. We have lots of vans. We have reading camps and coding camps and first book programs, a ton of stuff for early childhood folks. So, hopefully, we can get that message out to your appropriate teachers. And Children's Festival, we are a big part of. In your document, I think it's page 14, you'll see the return on your investment. I should have it ready for you, but, yeah, on page 14, you invested $3 per student last year with WHRO. You received $1,100,000 of direct value in savings. That's for every dollar invested, you receive a return of $6.75. So, it's all well documented in this report. With that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Does anybody have any questions? Okay. Ms. Anderson.
I just want to say thank you because we are so lucky to be a part of WHRO and so lucky to have that for our students, and as you just pointed out, saving that much money per, for $3, we get back more than double our investment. But not only that, it's just the quality that you put out, and I can't say enough good things about it. I watch a lot of the programs as well, so I appreciate everything.
Appreciate that.
And thank you for being a partner in education. That's so important. Truly, thank you.
Well, thank you. Thank you. Okay. Take care.
Would you like to go back to administrative matters or on to Tony? Okay. At this time, we will back up to administrative matters. Does anybody have an administrative matter at this time?
Maybe. I'm not sure. Should I do the report from the governance committee now?
No, that's, okay. So, seeing none, we will now proceed...
Well, that would just be me then.
Oh, okay. All right. Go ahead.
Good afternoon, everyone. I do want to share, I had the honor of welcoming remarks to last week's teacher forum on behalf of all of you, and I hope that their follow-up discussion was fruitful and productive. Likewise, as in my ex officia role with the Virginia Beach Foundation, their kickoff virtual meeting of the year took place last week as well. A lot of good things happening. You can feel free to reach out to me with any particular questions. I do feel, two things of note is that they are celebrating 30 years this year, and most are aware of the upcoming Pearls of Wisdom event this Saturday. But connected with this milestone anniversary, the foundation is upping its teacher grants by $30,000. So, I thought, what a fitting way to commemorate such a special milestone. And they mentioned the relocation to the FACE Office at Plaza, and the status of the present house project, so that's proceeding. And then there were two staff members from Callum who, they often include, you know, an update on one of the, a grant recipient, and in this case, it was Ms. McGee and Ms. Hoffman from Callum High School, and they gave us, with the help of students, a virtual presentation of the Senior Signature Experience, a new program at Callum High School being funded by the Education Foundation. So, that covers that. The adopted schools list and staff memo will be out in the next 24 to 48 hours, so be on the lookout for that via email. There is an update to the Plaza venue in terms of the availability for meetings. We had asked that a few meetings be reserved. If you recall, our last meeting, even though it was only a few dates, and I've been told that there were some details that surfaced that now make this not possible, and I'm going to ask either Dr. Spence or Mr. Freeman to provide further details for us.
Yes, ma'am. Just at a high level, the short version is we've moved our contact tracing operation into the PDC because we had to significantly expand that due to the nature of the work that that team is doing, and that's an engagement with our health department as well, so they have folks on site with us. And so, unfortunately, it's not easy to move those folks in and out of there because there's some wiring requirements relative to computer access and phone access. So, after the last Board meeting, our team, Mr. Freeman and others who are over there working with that group, walked through the area again to see if that would be possible to open it up for those meetings, and pretty much arrived at the conclusion that's not going to be possible. If you've got specific questions about the details of that, I know Mr. Freeman can speak to it.
Are there any questions? Again, it was a good faith effort. It wasn't going to increase by much the number of citizens who could attend in person. I think it, you know, was perhaps 10 more, but we all felt it was worth it to show that good faith effort, and, you know, it just turned out to be a little more involved than we, than staff originally thought. And my final admin matter is the VSBA conference, and I'm just referring you all to the email I sent you all, I believe, right before the weekend, to just please follow up with me if you are interested. And I think I, on behalf of the clerk and me, we asked for a response by tomorrow with a little wiggle room, and certainly call us with any questions about that. So, with that, we are ready for our construction projects update. Mr. Arnold.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Board Members, Dr. Spence. We typically provide you guys an update in the fall on the status of all of our ongoing construction projects, so I know you've got a lot on your agenda this evening, so I will move rather briskly through this. Prince Sam Middle School, really excited to tell you guys that the project opened on time in September and on budget. It is our 34th modernization or replacement project in our capital program totaling about $760 million. I really can't thank Sandy Brown and her staff and the folks over there at PA Middle. You know, moving is not easy, whether you're moving into a new house, but particularly into a new school. The folks in our Custodian Distribution Services shop, Sam Nixon and his team, you know, you guys probably know this, but we have our own in-house moving team, and so the cleaning and moving that went on to get the folks out of the old Callum and into that new building pretty seamlessly. You know, I think those folks deserve a lot of credit. It's a great school building. We do look forward to the day that we can celebrate not only the opening of Prince Sam Middle School, but the opening of Thurgood Elementary School, hopefully in the not-too-distant future. Last aerial photograph, some interior shots. And I heard you mention the FACE facility. The PDC did open about a year ago. We moved into the new addition, which is called the Family and Community Engagement Center this past late spring. We're in the process of finishing up punchless work. Again, you know, big effort from the folks in Custodian Distribution to move from the Laskin Road Annex into that building this past summer. That really completes the, what I will call, our administrative and operational facilities for this school division, I hope, for the foreseeable future. We are in the process, just for your information, of working with the city's Department of Economic Development in the disposition of the Laskin Road Annex property. Mrs. Felton represents you, your team, on that working group, so you'll have more information in the next couple of months on that. The Chievo Dream at Lynn Haven Middle School. This is interesting. For the first time in my career, we've had to pull the project back and redesign the structural steel. Bar joists are simply not available, and the timeframe needed to build this project, we call it the Amazon Impact. Amazon is buying up a great deal of the marketplace worth of bar joists, so we had to redesign the structural steel roofing system back to beams, put the project, delayed the project bid by about a month. The bid's a week from tomorrow. We've also pushed back the projected opening date from January of 2023 to September 2023 due to supply chain problems. It's not just steel. You know, you guys are reading about it. It's impacting virtually everything, PVC, paint, so really unusual time in the marketplace. We know it's going to have an impact on cost. I don't know what that is yet. We'll have more information in about a week, but we will report back to you after the bid opening. So, summer infrastructure projects. We did about $20 million worth of projects this summer, replaced the roof at Red Mill Elementary School, a 1989 building, original roof. Similar problems with roofing insulation. This contractor, Hartland Construction, and J.D. Miles, the roofer, did a great job. We're over there buttoning it up right now. So, that roof actually went pretty smoothly considering some of the roofing insulation was late getting to the job. Sea-Tac Elementary School, we split, we had to split this up into two phases, again, for supply chain-related issues, didn't get all the roofing insulation. So, when you ride by Bird Neck Road, it'll look like it's finished. We finished about two-thirds of it. The back half of the roof on the backside of the building will get done next summer. But TST Tactical did a great job getting things buttoned up this summer. Kempsville High School HVAC roof replacement, similar issues with roofing insulation, so we pushed back the last phase of the roof to summer 2022. The insulation was showing up too late. We didn't want to work into the fall over top of staff and students, so the contractor agreed to push back the last phase of the roofing project. All the HVAC work is done, and I think Melissa George is quite frankly tired of looking at us over there. But we'll be back next summer to finish up the last phase of the roofing project. Small HVAC project at Bayside High School, about $850,000, was done successfully. Key to these projects, folks, is getting them out on the street early in the wintertime where you can get equipment ordered. So, we did a pretty good job this year getting projects out early and making sure that we got mechanical equipment. We're having hard times, a hard time getting those pieces of equipment delivered as well. We also removed the lockers. You may recall that about a year and a half ago, this was a project that was deferred that was supposed to be done last summer. The contractor spacemakers, Bjorn Marshall, who's actually a Bayside High School graduate, agreed to hold his price, and we accomplished the locker removal this summer. Similar to Kempsville High School, it's really, if you've been in any of those prototype schools, Kempsville, Callum, First Colonial, or the old Callum, Bayside, it's really fascinating how different the building feels when you remove the lockers and gain space in there. And so, we did, similar to what we did at Kempsville, we create some charging stations, some what we call apple bars, so makes a huge difference. And in today's times where space is good, that's really going to provide a benefit to the, to the school. Small HVAC project at Corporate Landing Elementary School was finished on time this Everybody loves cranes. About $800,000 HVAC equipment replacement project at Indian Lakes was built and finished on time. Here's some pictures of the rooftop equipment. Ocean Lakes High School, boilers don't last forever, $800,000 in a building that was built in 1994. Hard to believe that that building's 27 years old. Something that's interesting, and I think you'll see it in our newer buildings, physical plants, we used to close the doors and hide the stuff, the equipment, and now we make that much more visible in buildings. You'll see that with some of our geothermal systems, use those pieces of equipment as a teaching tool for students. Replace the HVAC at the Plaza Annex. That's actually getting ready to start next week. That's a project that is a fall project in the old Plaza Annex that's about a $900,000 project that replaced some of the rooftop equipment primarily over the benefit space and the old admin space. Equipment is long past its useful life. Two really cool projects, if you've been out there. We installed synthetic turf at Bayside and Green Run High Schools, and they were ready for fall football, so the athletes in the schools really love these projects. I think it's going to help as you consider lacrosse in your future. School fields, particularly in these older schools where you have, you don't have the type of acreage you have at a new Callum, and some of the newer buildings, they're starved for field space, so this, you know, it can rain, you can come back 30 minutes and be ready to play, and that's why Callum has gotten so much use. Replacing the press box at Green Run High School, we'll do that after football season this winter. The next two synthetic turf projects, Green Run and Salem High Schools are actually, were advertised for bid about two weeks ago. We should open bids in a couple of weeks, and those projects are scheduled to start after football season in November, finish next summer in time for football season and fall of 2022.
Did you mean First Colonial and Salem?
What did I say?
Green Run and Bayside.
Thank you.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure, since I saw that slide and then it left.
Sorry about that. We will, correct, First Colonial and Salem High Schools, we will replace the stadium fields with synthetic turf fields. Thank you. Ongoing playground equipment replacement projects and the process of finishing up Airhead, Glenwood, and Tech Center, little delay on shipping of equipment here. Those projects will finish up before Thanksgiving. Couple of pictures. We recently approved the next phase at Brookwood-Holland in Malibu. They'll start construction this winter and finish up in the summer in time for 22, '23 school year. Talbot High School tennis courts, upgrading the tennis courts, about a $450,000 project is substantially complete, working on punchless. Pictures of that. Simple little fire alarm replacement, health, safety, and welfare. Our electrical shop works hard on maintaining our equipment, but when you can't get parts, you've got to replace the equipment, so a $275,000 project that was finished on time this summer. Lynn Haven Middle School library flip. This was interesting when we went over to do the programming and the design stretch for the classroom addition at Lynn Haven Middle School. We were in the original library, and it was the same library that was built, the building was built, and so we created a library flip outside of the project, and you'll see some pictures. It's our, I believe it's our 22nd library flip. We've been working with Kipps Team and Kelly Miller, the media center specialist on library flips, make a huge, huge impact on these older buildings, particularly the buildings that we're not getting to in terms of modernizing or replacing them. You know, the library still is the heart of the building. The second project that was deferred from last summer, contractor agreed to hold a price, was replacing the gym floors at five elementary schools, Cook, Lincoln Park, Luxford, Lynn Haven, and Malibu Elementary Schools were all replaced this summer. More sustainable product that's a little bit easier on the knees for staff and students. Energy performance contracts, projects at Centerville, or Bayside, Centerville, Ocean Lakes, and Shelton Park Elementary Schools, all but done, little bit of lighting left at Bayside Elementary. And I hope when you're in the building, as you notice, the improved lighting, you know, the lighting technology has come such a long way. All of our buildings now are moving towards full LED lighting, and so the quality of the lighting for staff and students compared to some of the older technology is really, a really, really huge improvement. Centerville also involved the last phase of HVAC along with lighting. Ocean Lakes Elementary is interesting. That's the last phase of work. We got the rest of the building on the geothermal loop, and we also put solar panels up on that building this summer in a power purchase agreement with Sun Tribe Solar out of Charlottesville. We've got about five or six months of utility bills and data under our belt, and we are, we're very confident that Ocean Lakes Elementary is on its way to being our first net-zero building where we produce more energy at the site than we utilize. So, that's a really good thing, and I think you'll see us continue to work towards those types of things in the future. That building is the same building as Red Mill Elementary, by the way. It's a prototype school that was built in the late 80s, so it's even better, it's even more amazing that you... So it's even more amazing that you take a 30-plus-year-old building and turn it into a net zero building. Some of the lighting at Shelton Park. And stuff that doesn't, quite frankly, doesn't get enough attention, in my opinion, the work that our maintenance services team, Eric Woodhouse's team in maintenance services does each and every day. We did about $6 million worth of work this summer, painted about 10 buildings, electrical upgrades, generators, transformers, switchboards, small HVAC projects, carpeting replacements, all these types of things that go on in our school buildings every summer. Those guys just do a tremendous, tremendous job. In addition to all the other things that they are doing related to the ongoing work to support keeping our buildings clean and well-maintained so that we all feel safe in buildings today. So I can't say enough about the work that our maintenance services team does. Madam Chair, that concludes my update. That represents about $130 million worth of capital and operating budget improvements. You know, the bulk of it, the big project at Prince Sam Middle School, I'm proud of the fact that Prince Sam Middle School opened on time. You know, we've been doing this long enough to know to build float time into our schedules for unforeseen types of things. You've seen the City Hall project get pushed back twice. We're proud of the fact that we opened our building one time in September for staff and students over there. Be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, we'll start with Mrs. Melnick, then Mrs. Anderson.
So Mr. Arnold, a couple of things. Glad to hear the contractors held their prices when projects were delayed. Lighting makes a huge difference. You are correct. I replaced all the lighting in my manufacturing space and it is a game changer. And the other thing is, kudos to you and your staff, as I have a deep understanding and appreciation of project management. But the amount of projects that you manage, the magnitude of what you and your staff do, it's commendable, especially as you said, when you're turning projects on time. So that's great work and I thank you for all of that.
Thank you.
Okay, Mrs. Anderson.
I just have a question about the turf fields. And I realize part of the reason why you choose these older schools has to do with the fact that they don't have as much room to move around as some of the other newer schools do. But do you think they're going to get enough use before we replace those schools so that we have to tear up those turf fields? I mean, are we going to get our money's worth before we have to tear those fields up?
The life of it, short answer is yes, ma'am. The life of a turf field is typically 10 to 12 years. Sometimes you can get as much as 15 years out of it. We've had that very conversation around Bayside High School. And the fact that hopefully the schedule for the replacement of Bayside might get moved up from the projected 2033 start. So even if it does get moved up two or three years, you can always re, I call it the rug. You can always reuse the turf, roll it up and reuse it. And depending upon how that project is developed, if the building goes back in the same, generally the same place, some of the field and site elements might remain where they are. But we're comfortable that we'll get good use out of all these fields.
Okay, I appreciate that.
And just so you know, we work with our student activities office in prioritizing which fields come next, as well as Frank Fentress and the folks in Landscape Services.
Okay, I just want to make sure that we're going to get our money's worth before. I mean, everybody hopes that we're going to get these new schools replaced sooner than is projected. But at the same time, I don't want to waste money on something that we're going to have to, and as long as we could, possibly if it came sooner, we could reuse the field, that rug. As you put it, that would work as well. Thanks.
Questions or comments from anybody else? Mrs. Rigs.
I just want to say thank you. This is amazing. All of the things that you guys accomplish in keeping our schools up to par. It's very recognizable and it's very much appreciated walking into the schools and seeing what, when I taught, the difference in the lighting with it is now. That's just one major thing that we can really see. But just accomplishing all of this and keeping, like I said, our schools in such good shape. Thank you for all you do, you and your staff.
Thank you. You know, it's the first summer we've had facilities, maintenance, custody on distribution under one umbrella. And that's a tribute to Dr. Spence and Jack. And so moving into a new school building involves everybody. And so having everyone aligned makes a huge, huge difference. And we saw that at Prince Sam Middle School this summer and when we opened the building in the fall. So thank you very much.
Ms. Owens.
Yep. Just a quick one in terms of the Sea-Tac completion of the roof. Looked like August was the estimated or goal date. Do you know if there was any consideration with like making sure that it didn't fall into, I guess, the July month before? I know this year, they, one of our kind of year-round schools, and so they weren't able to do it this year and wanted to make sure they do July, so.
Yeah, we, with a limited number of days to do the work, we talked directly with the staff about coordinating our efforts and the contractor's efforts to minimize the impact on, because each program is unique and different. We do that with all the summer school programs. So we will do that next summer as well. Yes, ma'am.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that seems to cover it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our thanks please convey to your team. Our thanks. This brings us up to Dr. Rogers, our chief academic officer, to discuss a comprehensive tutoring plan and on-time graduation data. Did I get that right?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you much. Good evening, Chairwoman Rye, Vice Chair Melick, School Board members and Dr. Spence. This afternoon, I will provide you with a few updates around providing our students with schedule as well as on-demand academic support or what we call tutoring. This will be followed by Dr. Banakie providing you with an update on our on-time graduation as well as our cohort dropout rates. In several previous updates, I shared that the Department of Teaching and Learning adjusted curriculum focused on refining instructional practices, tailored professional learning to support our teachers, as well as plan for the strong focus on student well-being to address the acceleration of student learning as a result of the pandemic. And as we plan to support the acceleration of student learning with our curriculum instruction assessment, we identified several research-based best practices that pointed out tutoring as a targeted solution to support the acceleration of student learning. Research does provide strong evidence that high dosage tutoring can produce large learning gains for a wide range of students, including those who have fallen behind academically. So as a result, we set out to create a comprehensive tutoring plan. The creation of the plan was another interdepartmental collaborative effort. And I do want to thank Dr. Monica Robertson for assisting and leading the work associated with the comprehensive tutoring plan. There we go. So it's important for you to know that our comprehensive tutoring plan is aligned to our teaching and learning framework, our SEO framework, our strategic plan, conference of 2025, as well as our graduate profile. And I want to focus just a minute on the alignment of tutoring to our teaching and learning framework. So you see with the plan part of our framework, tutoring will ensure that planning for student success is a key component to the program. Our tutors will receive comprehensive training and the skills and content that's necessary to be successful tutors. The teaching aspect, tutoring will take place synchronously and asynchronously, or face-to-face or virtually. And sessions may be scheduled to be accessed on demand to support student intervention as well as their acceleration needs. For the assessment, tutoring will use data to examine, align and identify student needs. And frequent progress monitoring and diagnostic assessments will ensure that our tutoring is personalized so that students will receive what they need and when they need it. So we are fortunate in that we have many opportunities to provide resources to support our students. And recognizing this, we convened an interdepartmental committee that did an asset inventory of all of the tutoring opportunities that are available in our school districts. And we also identified whether some of the opportunities to improve those opportunities. And we came up with the title ASAP Tutoring, or Academic Support and Acceleration Program for Tutoring. As we identified this name to embrace our sense of urgency and our desire to make sure that we are providing both support and acceleration opportunities for our students in response to their needs. And having the BBCPS ASAP Tutoring Program will ensure that six goals relative to tutoring are met. The first of which is making sure that all of our stakeholders are aware that students have 24/7 access to some form of tutoring support throughout the day, evening, as well as throughout the weekends. Tutoring opportunities can occur virtually or face-to-face. Highly qualified staff are hired and trained academically to support our students. Frequent progress monitoring that ensures the effectiveness of all of our tutoring programs, as well as tutoring being aligned to the specific skills as associated with the Virginia Department of Learning, excuse me, the Virginia Department of Education, as well as tutoring being able to provide both intervention as well as acceleration support for our students. And now I'll share what that plan actually is. Our tutoring supports are separated into three tiered levels. Some of the tutoring opportunities cross tiers and are not necessarily exclusive to one tier. So for example, in tier one of our plan, tier one tutoring supports are provided to students as they are requested or as they are needed in terms of the frequency. And they are offered in small groups of no more than five and can be scheduled or on-demand. Some of the examples of our tier one tutoring opportunities include advanced placement tutoring, avid tutors, Khan Academy or FEV tutor. And I'll share a little bit more about FEV tutoring in that. For students requiring another layer of tutoring support, schools can use recommendations that are outlined in the plan for tier two tutoring. Students may be offered one-to-one tutoring at a recommended frequency of two to three times a week for about 20 to 30 minutes each time. These students may be students who are likely to be in danger of not passing an assessment or even not passing a course. And some examples of tutoring support that we'd offer these students would be algebra readiness tutoring for students who qualify for that tutoring, or academic support tutoring during and after school. The next tier is tier three, and these are for students who are requiring a significant tutoring support plan. And we'd offer them tier three supports that would be very much targeted to their specific needs and offered at least three times per week. And some examples of these would be students participating in an SOL lab or being tutored by one of our tutor ed tutors. I'll explain that in a minute. So what tutoring programs do we offer? There are generally three, the three general categories with which we offer tutoring supports. And the first category is generally academic support. The second one is FEV tutor, and then the last is tutor ed. I want to talk a little bit about academic support. Academic supports are school-wide tutoring that are utilized to support interventions in our core subject areas. And tutoring can take place either before, during or outside of school hours. All of our schools do receive some type of tutoring funds. Schools maintain records of those tutoring sessions and the use of those funds. And schools do have the flexibility in how tutoring is scheduled, as some tutoring is held before, during or after school, as well as in evenings and during weekends. And of course, that touring can take place either face-to-face or virtually. The second category is FEV tutor, and I've shared a little bit about this in previous meetings. The FEV tutoring is personalized one-to-one tutoring in math, science, social studies or English. And it does provide an opportunity for both intervention as well as acceleration, and it supports general and advanced courses. Our students do have 24/7 access to FEV tutor. And administrators are provided weekly data, including myself, that include the skills on which students have received that tutoring. It also includes exit ticket data and even student feedback on the student's tutor experience. Our current FEV tutor experience is available right now for all of our students in grades six through 12. So it's available for secondary students. And I'd like to share a brief video clip that's going to be included on our website for our families and students to have access to that explains a little more about FEV tutor.
Excellent news. Virginia Beach City Public Schools has partnered with FEV tutor to provide students with district-sponsored live, one-to-one, online tutoring. Students are meeting with online tutors for homework help, skill building and to prepare for key assessments. Tutoring is available in all core subject areas, including math, English, science and social studies. Students can access online tutoring through our website, fevtutor.com, or through their ClassLink Launchpad. During tutoring sessions, tutors and students meet in an engaging virtual classroom with a variety of communication options for students of every learning style. Students have the option to request to meet with a tutor on demand or can even schedule lessons with a preferred instructor. The quickest way to schedule a tutoring session is to send an email directly to our 24/7 support team with your preferred tutoring days, times and subjects. You can also call 855-763-2607 and speak with an engagement specialist about a personalized tutoring plan and schedule one that works for you. But hurry, there's no time to waste. Popular time slots are filling up quickly. Contact our support team today and begin participating in FEV tutor and create your path to achieving your academic goals.
And then the third category is with tutor ed, and this is our newest partnership with tutor ed. And seven of our schools are participating in the Palo, what we're referring to as the first phase of this partnership. The selected schools on the slide will receive either one or two full-time tutors who will participate in math instruction as well as intervention for those students. Schools that are receiving two full-time tutors are indicated in bold on the slide. So our tutor ed tutors will collaborate with our specialists as well as with teachers in order to determine the individualized needs of the building, specific classrooms and/or teachers. They'll receive training by our Department of Teaching and Learning math staff and specialists in order to ensure alignment with our curriculum as well as with our instructional practices in the school division. They'll maintain logs as well as other documentation to support teachers and students. And then they'll participate in tutoring model that utilizes a combination of push-in and pull-out small groups in order to support student learning. Our first training with schools and tutor ed staff took place last week and it went extremely well. So what's our next action for ASAP tutoring? One of the biggest takeaways that our committee realized was that we needed to ensure that everyone was aware that we have, aware of the things that we have to offer relative to tutoring in our school district. And with the guidance of Department of School Leadership, our schools are now required to include information about FEV tutor on their school sites as well as in their newsletters. We're working closely with communications and community engagement to actualize our marketing plan for teachers, students and the community. And in fact, the website for the tutoring opportunities has been created for our internal and external stakeholders, and it'll be live soon. We anticipate by the end of this weekend. There's a snip of the website on that slide there. And then lastly, we plan to continue to develop our tutoring training protocols. And in fact, last week, we began to put plans in place for using FEV tutors for our students in grades three through five. And ironically, our data does show that many of our fifth grade students utilize FEV this summer for their support in math. And I'll now turn the rest of the presentation over to Dr. Banakie to share information on on-time graduation as well as dropout rates.
Thank you, Dr. Rogers, and welcome, Dr. Banakie.
Thank you, Dr. Rogers. Dr. Rogers has shared the division's efforts this year to address unfinished learning through tutoring programs and services. We believe that this commitment to identifying and addressing student needs is one reason that the division has been able to achieve high graduation rates and lower dropout rates, and that's what I'd like to share with you now. As a reminder, yeah, as a reminder, the Virginia on-time graduation rate is based on the percentage of students in a cohort who earned a board of education-approved diploma within four years of entering high school for the first time. The cohort dropout rate reflects the percentage of students who entered the ninth grade in a given cohort but left high school permanently at some point during high school and cannot be accounted for elsewhere. So as you could, oh, yeah, that's some close spacing. Sorry. As you can see on this slide, the division's on-time graduation rate has, so look at the lines, have increased steadily from 85.3% in 2009 to 94.9% in 2021. Between 2010 and 2015, the on-time graduation rate for the state of Virginia was slightly higher than the rates observed in Virginia Beach, but then starting in 2016, the division's rate has outpaced the on-time graduation rate at the state level. This slide displays the on-time graduation rate for various student groups within our school division over the last three years. Male students, Caucasian students, Hispanic students, and students with disabilities have evidenced an upward trend over the past three years. When comparing results from 2020 to 2021, the on-time graduation rate for females, males, African-Americans, Caucasians, Hispanic students with disabilities, and economically disadvantaged students demonstrated growth between .4 and two percentage points. The Hispanic student group showed the largest increase among student groups, and the Asian student group was the only group to evidence a decrease between 2020 and 2021 with a decrease of .5 percentage points. When we examine our on-time graduation rate for the class of 2021 in relation to our most comparable school divisions, our on-time graduation rate is higher than all of the other divisions with the exception of Loudoun County. Now, as we look at the cohort dropout rates, again, look at the lines, as you can see on this slide, the division's cohort dropout rate has evidenced a decreasing, decreasing trend between 2009 and 2014, saw an increase in 2015 before continuing a downward trend to the lowest percentage reported to date of 2.7% in 2021. The division's cohort dropout rate has consistently been lower than the rate observed at the state level. An examination of the cohort dropout rate by student group revealed that the rates over the three-year period have fluctuated, but with the exception of Asian students and Caucasian students, the cohort dropout rates decreased from 2020 to 2021. The largest decreases between 2020 and 2021 occurred for students with disabilities and Hispanic students with decreases of 1.6 and 1.4 percentage points respectively. An examination of the cohort dropout rates among our comparable school divisions revealed that with the exceptions of Loudoun and Stafford County, our rate was lower than that observed among the remaining five school divisions. We attribute our success with respect to the on-time graduation rate and cohort dropout rate to the hard work of our schools, particularly during a challenging time with so much influx. And I'm sure I'm not alone in wanting to personally thank the school counselors, graduation coaches, and all staff involved in working to ensure our students persisted and were prepared to graduate. This concludes our presentation. At this time, Dr. Rogers and I are available to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, and we'll begin with Mrs. Anderson.
So this will be for Dr. Rogers. Who is doing the tutoring and like, are you utilizing teachers, asking teachers to do this and getting paid extra? Are you, are you hiring people who are not currently teaching?
So it's a combination of both, and it depends on which tutoring. Many of our, our schools are giving tutoring funds with which they use classroom teachers. They use retired teachers that come in and to offer tutoring support. We have contracted with FEV Tutors that is an online program that utilizes a real person. Tutor Ed does use a real actual person that's an outside company that comes into it. So it's a combination of both, and it depends upon.
So this might be an opportunity for retired teachers to.
Absolutely.
Who, should they contact Human Resources?
No, they should contact the building principal, and the building principals are really good about contacting retired staff to come in and offer support. And that's something that we've been doing for some time, so this isn't new.
And if there are teachers out there who are currently part of our staffs, they would be getting paid extra for this if they chose, if they have the time, because we're hearing that they're really stressed for time right now. But if they did choose to do this, would they be getting paid extra?
So again, this is something that we've been doing for some time. We just packaged it together so that, that it's understood with both internal and external stakeholder. So yes, they do get paid additional.
Thank you.
Sure.
And Miss, Mrs. Weems, then Mrs. Manning.
Thank you. I, I may have missed, missed this, but what does FEV stand for?
I know somebody was going to ask me that.
Okay, so I didn't miss it. I'm, I'm thinking what does it stand for?
I had to ask them what it stands for, and it's a convoluted acronym.
Okay, I, I was just trying to figure it out and fit, you know, putting all sorts of things in there. Okay, the, the, okay, the face-to-face tutoring, you said it can be online or face-to-face.
Yes, ma'am.
During school, after school, on weekends. Where do they go if it's after school and on weekends? Where, where is this tutoring taking place?
So FEV Tutoring is virtual, so they have, students would have access to that opportunity after school.
I'm talking about the face-to-face, yeah, not, not FEV anymore. Yeah, the, you said there can be face-to-face tutoring. So where does that take place? After school hours or on the weekend?
So, and that's been happening for quite some time. So for example, if you have a student who's struggling in algebra, you could certainly get tutoring support from your teacher during and after school block before.
And where does that take place? Does it take place, like, if it's on a Saturday or Sunday, the schools aren't open, so where does that happen?
The face-to-face opportunities may not necessarily take place on Saturday or Sunday in all instances, but for example, we have AP bootcamps that take place on weekends that, that students would arrange. We have, I know we had lots of preparation this past school year for AP exams and IP exams.
Okay, so that's more group when it's set up at school.
So it depends on, on what the, the program is and which it would be offered on the weekends and.
Okay, and I'm assuming we've got special education tutors that obviously need to go, you know, that, that are, that know special education and know the student and their IP and their challenges and how they best learn and all that.
Yes, ma'am, correctly. So each school designs their own tutoring program, and they have a plethora of tutoring programs that they offer students that are tailored to their specific needs.
Okay, and lastly, I guess this is for you, Ms. Banakie. The dropout rate, what, what grade, what's, what's the data that shows when, when the students are dropping out? Is it after, because I know at one point it used to be, algebra used to be the big one that would stump, you know, stump a lot of people, we were told. But is it after ninth grade? Is it after 10th grade?
Yeah, I'd have to look at that and get back to you with what it looks like most recently. I don't want to have to guess or give you enough. But we can look at that and see, when does it look like of the few dropouts we have, when does that occur?
Okay, yeah, that, that would be interesting and maybe helpful. It, it's, it's, it's a low number, and that's great, but, you know, any is too many, and if we can figure out why and when, that, that might help us move forward. Okay, I love the tutoring. Thank you so much. That's great, especially after, you know, learning so long virtually. I, I think that the tutoring, especially in person, is just outstanding. Thank you.
Okay, Mrs. Manning.
Yes, so I love the concept of these online tutoring options. The FEV, and well, it sounded like the Tutor Ed is brand-new. We haven't really.
Tutor Ed is brand-new. We really just started our first professional learning session with them last week on the fifth.
Okay, the FEV, how long have we had it and kind of how many students have we seen kind of take advantage of it?
I can get that information for you. We started it last year, so it's been around for just a little while, and Dr. Robinson leveraged that, that resource. So I don't want to give you a, a number without looking at it, but I can certainly get that information from you. But I, what I will tell you is that I do get a, a report at the end of every week that lets me know, as well as anybody else, administrators who, who would like to get that, the number of students who are taking advantage of it and what they did. What I'll also share that came out as a result of our committee is that we don't have as many students aware of the resources as we'd like to, which is one of the reasons why we convened in and of itself and partnered with the Department of Communications and Community Engagements. You may want to package the, the video that you just saw as well as the website that will have not only FEV resources, but the other tutoring opportunities that are available so that students can be aware and they can ask and find out. But we are certainly, it's a work in progress, and we certainly want to make sure we're taking advantage of. What I also share is that those students who have taken advantage of FEV tutors, I have really appreciated. We've got nothing but positive comments about that resource.
And if I may give some input, I know one thing that I always read as a parent is the, the principal's newsletter. So maybe, and I know we don't want to get.
Yes, we did.
Put too much in there, and then people not read it, but that might be, put it in there one month. And then just what's, what's the cost of it? Are we paying, you know, are we paying per student? And what's the overall cost?
The hour. So they bill us by the hour, and the good news about what we pay, and I think it's about $22 an hour-ish, is what we pay, and we are leveraging, using CARES funds to support that. The good news about that is hours do roll over from year to year, so we wouldn't lose anything if we paid and they were not used.
So we pay for a certain number of hours?
Yeah, you pay for a bank of hours, and then if they're not using it, it will roll up. We can always add hours to it if needed, and then we were able to roll some of the hours over from last year.
Okay, great. I think that's a great use of the CARES funding. Thank you.
Certainly.
Okay, we have Mrs. Holtz, then Mrs. Melnik.
Thank you. About the tutoring, there's so many different offerings. It looks wonderful on paper, but I'm, I'm wondering about eligibility and also access. For instance, if a parent and a student isn't doing well in a subject, let's say, algebra, do they, do, do they go to the website and sign up? Do they need a recommendation from a teacher? What is the first step?
And that's, that's a great question. I want to reiterate that all of the opportunities for tutoring have been available for our students. Really, the only two new opportunities are the FEV and the Tutor Ed. So as with any opportunity for students to have a tutoring opportunity, it would begin with, at the school level or the parent, just simply asking, hey, you know, my student needs some support in algebra. What do you have to support? With Algebra Readiness, students do take an assessment, and they're identified early on, and so they receive the tutoring support anyway, regardless of that, especially if, if they've, you know, met those criteria. So it would just be a simple ask, and that's what we're trying to do to make sure that we get the word out that we have these tutoring opportunities that are available. Now granted, all students will qualify for all opportunities because, for example, Algebra Readiness, we do receive funding to support the tutors there, but we do have other mechanisms with which we can provide support to those students who need it. And then also on the website, excuse me, the FEV Tutor, because that is on-demand, there'll be a little button, and even on the video said you can call us, send an email, but there'll be a button on the website where if a student wants to get support with FEV Tutor, and it's a live tutor, they can just simply click that button, and it's not just in math, it's in all content areas.
So on that website, is that open to anybody or do you need a password?
That is open to our students for Virginia Beach City Public Schools.
Yes, ma'am. How do you identify our students?
I'm sorry?
How do you identify?
So they'll be on the Chromebooks. You saw on the video.
Oh, it's on the Chromebook. Okay, okay, thank you.
Access it through ClassLink.
Okay, we're going to jump ahead to Mrs. Franklin, then Ms. Owens.
Thank you. I wanted to just clarify because I, I'm reading that on the FEV Tutor, the options for targeted instruction for third through 12th graders, but I thought you said sixth through 12.
So yes, ma'am. Currently, we have for sixth through 12, and we're in conversation with expanding that through grades, for grades three through five.
Okay, okay, good. So, so that is correct, the sixth through 12. Okay, and then when you say parents need to just simply ask, is that starting with the guidance counselor? Who were they asking?
I would ask the teacher.
The teachers?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Owens.
And my, my question is in regards to Tutor Ed. Is that a independent company that we are contracting with?
Yes, we already have a contract with them. They provide the tutoring support for our Algebra Readiness Tutor, which is not as intensive as the Tutor Ed program will be. And so, for example, with Tutor Ed, we anticipate, it's like having an additional teacher actually in the, in the classroom to support some of our new math teachers who don't have a lot of experience in the classroom and some of our teachers who have students that require some additional support. So it's an additional leg of that company that's, that, that has expanded to provide a little more intense tutoring.
Gotcha. So they are, they have already hired these people and they are going to be in our schools starting now?
So, yes, we, we've started planning for the now, our first opportunity before we want them in the classroom with students. We want to train them on the Virginia Beach way and ensuring that. So we, you know, anticipate being able to start relatively soon with that support.
All right, thank you.
Certainly.
Okay, we'll, we'll let Mrs. Melnik wind up our questioning so we can get on to our final topic.
So two things. The first is, do we still have SOL tutoring, or will this take the place? Or it'll be in the.
We still offer SOL tutoring, and schools are given.
But the same concept for teachers, right? Okay, so I did that for a couple of years. So I just, okay, same concept. And the other is, I didn't want you to walk away without this board recognizing our appreciation for that high school graduation rate and the student dropout rate. It's commendable, and our teachers and our graduation tutors and administrators and everybody truly deserve a round of applause. From most of this board. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, thank you all. Final workshop subject of the evening is COVID Health and Safety Mitigations. Welcome, Mr. Freeman.
Thank you, and good afternoon, Chairwoman Ryan, Vice Chair Melnik, members of the board, and Dr. Spence. Dr. Sultner and I will be providing today's update. Dr. Nancy Welch, the Acting Director of Virginia Beach Department of Public Health, is scheduled to join us. She hasn't been able to join the Zoom link, but she may join during the course of the presentation and hopefully be able to answer some of your questions at the end as well. I'll be updating you on community transmission metrics, contact tracing data, vaccination information, results from our first week of COVID safety assessments, and winter high school athletics testing. This is a screenshot from the Virginia Department of Health website. It shows the level of community transmission. You can see on the right that DDH is reporting that Virginia Beach remains in the high category for a level of transmission with 177.6 new cases per 100,000 in the last seven days and a percent positivity of 8.1%. Next to those numbers in gray, you can see what was reported at the last school board meeting, 226.2 and 10.7%. You can also see the reductions in the two graphs at the bottom of the slide. The continued downward trend in this data is good news, but we are still in the high category for community transmission due to the number of new cases. With high community transmission, we know that we will see cases in our schools. There have been 655 positive cases reported in our schools since September 1st, which is up from 387 that was reported at the last school board meeting. That includes 119 employees who were positive, 530 students, and three visitors. For comparison purposes, all the numbers in parentheses on this slide were the numbers that were reported at the last school board meeting. Positive cases in schools and activities result in close contacts being identified, and since September 1st, nearly 3,000 close contacts have been identified, and a little over two-thirds of those close contacts were required to quarantine. A continued notable positive, you can see that 527 of our student close contacts were exempt from quarantine as were 220 of our staff because they were fully vaccinated and asymptomatic or, in some cases, had COVID in the last 90 days. Probably the most important data point is the number of connected cases in Virginia Beach City Public Schools, 31. This is up from 15 reported at the last school board meeting. At this point in time, our analysis is that our mitigation strategy is working. As always, we will continue to monitor. One last item on contact tracing. As you know, we reduced the number of days of required for quarantine from 14 to 10 days, and we then monitored to understand the consequences of that change. At this point in time, there have been zero cases where symptoms developed after the 10-day quarantine. This is good news. It provides more opportunity for face-to-face instruction with what appears to be very low risk. In addition to contact tracing, supporting vaccinations is an important element of our prevention strategy. You can see that the vaccination rate for our eligible student population in Virginia Beach continues a slow upward trend. The increase averages out to about 1% per week. Here's the schedule for our school vaccination clinics. For the clinics during the week of September 20th to 23rd, an average of a little over 50 vaccinations were delivered. For the week of September 27th through the 30th, the average was almost 100 per clinic. We also conducted two additional clinics last week, and we were able to support 85 additional vaccinations. We have a plan ready to begin vaccinating our 11 and younger population at elementary school sites when authorization is received. To get a better understanding of the vaccination status of our employee population, over 10,000 employees were sent a brief, voluntary, and anonymous survey asking them to indicate their vaccination status. The survey dates were September 17th through 30th. The survey dates were September 17th through 30th. Of the total group of employees, 44% reported being fully vaccinated, 3% reported not being vaccinated, and 53% did not respond to the survey. Nearly 5,000 employees responded to the survey, which was about 47% response rate. If we look at the results only for those who responded, 94% of survey respondents reported being fully vaccinated. Results by location were similar with 94% of school-based and 93% of non-school-based respondents indicating that they were fully vaccinated. At the school locations, 95% of classroom teachers, 96% of administrators and other instructional staff, and 92% of other school staff, clerical, custodians, cafeteria staff, nurses, and security staff reported being fully vaccinated. Based upon the nature of the survey and given the less than 50% response rate, we cannot project what that means for our employee population as a whole. Our COVID safety assessment teams have completed one week of assessments focusing on classrooms, cafeterias, gymnasiums, and school buses. They were able to assess 12 schools with a mix of elementary and secondary sites. The teams report that masks are being worn properly greater than 94% of the time in classrooms and cafeterias, and distancing to the maximum extent practicable is observed greater than 83% of the time. School bus seating charts are a complex issue and we will continue to work on those. The last item that I'd like to share with you tonight is information about our plan to participate in the Virginia School Screening Testing for Assurance Program, beginning with the start of our winter athletic season in all high schools. At the last school board meeting, we announced that winter athletes would either need to be fully vaccinated or participate in weekly COVID testing as another means to reduce the spread of the virus as we move athletics to an indoor setting. We later shared that anyone who has had COVID within the last 90 days would be exempt from this process. This is similar to the exemption related to quarantine following a close contact. It was our hope to be able to share our implementation plan with you tonight, but we are not meeting with our assigned vendor until tomorrow. What I can share with you is provided on this slide. An MOU between Virginia Beach City Public Schools and Virginia Department of Health is required to participate in the testing program. Within this MOU, it notes that Virginia Department of Health will provide a vendor partner. In our case, it is Mako Medical Laboratories. The MOU provides for full funding of all testing supplies and materials as well as staffing of testing coordinators, nurses, and mitigation specialists based on the size of the school division. Virginia Beach City Public School must hire the positions and work with the Virginia Department of Health on the preferred method of compensation for these staff. Again, there is no cause to the division or to students or staff who participate in the testing program. It is also important to note the importance of this program as evidenced by the composition of the Virginia Beach City Public Schools team, as noted on the slide. After the meeting tomorrow, this team and a smaller group of principals and other staff will move forward with all due speed to get the program up and running. The goal is to have everything in place on November 8th. However, if our plans or staffing are not prepared by November 8th for full implementation, we will adjust the start date to ensure that everything is in place. We will be sure to communicate to all stakeholders in advance of the program's start, provide all necessary details, and have staff prepared to answer questions. With that, Dr. Soltner is up next to share some information from the Department of School Leadership.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman.
Thank you, and welcome, Dr. Soltner.
Thank you, Chairman Rye, Vice Chair Melnik, Dr. Spence. The first slide before you is our September 30th enrollment count. The numbers which you see will remain relatively stable compared to the two reports I've given you prior on the 5th and 10th days. Our numbers are, as you can see, very close to projection, off by just 913 students. They do include the 1.5% of students who opted for remote instruction. To give you a point of reference as well, as folks of some time inquired, how did the pandemic affect our enrollment? These numbers are off by only 138 students from last year's enrollment numbers. Sharing with you again the extracurricular updates. Here's a summary of the high school and middle level. I'll give you a moment to just scan those numbers. That second sub-bullet, 53, the number of positive student cases to date, appears relatively low, given the total number of athletes, nearly almost 3,000. However, again, as I emphasized last time, it's not so much the number of positive cases, it's the positive cases combined with quarantine, which is a concern. And that's the number 244. Using a very loose, conservative calculation and suggesting that students would be out about seven days on a quarantine, you're looking at 1,708 days of instruction that students have lost. I want to remind you that our number one priority is five days of instruction a week. The extracurriculars are not on, and we're delighted that we can continue to do so. For your own view, there it is, with high schools and middle schools broken down the same data. What's clear from this information is that when our athletes are vaccinated, their teams are generally not affected. As close contacts do not have to quarantine if they are asymptomatic and have been vaccinated. But we still have seen these 30 teams that have had to postpone or cancel events. We are going to be heading into our winter activities very soon. The high school winter program can start practices as early as November 8th, and their contests are scheduled to start November 29. At the middle level, winter sports are divided into two seasons, Winter 1 and Winter 2. And you're looking at Winter 1 here. And basketball may begin practices as early as November 15, with games beginning as early as December 2. Cheerleading, which began in the fall, extends their season from fall and will have a cheer competition January 19. And just as a point of information, Winter 2 season includes volleyball at the middle level and wrestling for boys as well as debate. I'd like to give you a moment to study this next slide so that you can see how we are responding to some concerns.
Should we clap now?
You ready, Ms. Melnik? BBCPS offers a robust and comprehensive professional learning program of both required and optional activities for our employee groups. The majority of this essential professional learning occurs during the school day. And you'll see by the big blue arrow, our number one challenge when we do this is substitutes. Our schools have been challenged with a significant shortage of subs from custodians to cafeteria, teacher assistants, and teachers. Professional learning, when we pull our teachers out, simply further impacts this shortage. We're monitoring numbers of unfilled positions on a daily basis. On a typical Monday or Friday, and there are high days, our elementary schools have on average six unfilled teacher positions. And on a daily basis, our secondary schools range from a low of three to a high of 12-plus. Sometimes on a Monday or Friday, up to 22 positions with less than half filled. In short, when substitutes cannot be secured, whether it's classified or teacher absence, we're taxing our staff. Somebody needs to cover those classes. That said, we have an unsustainable model for professional learning, and we recognize that, and we've made the decision to pause professional learning during the school day. You'll see that we do have a very few mission-essential face-to-face that will continue. And when I cite these as mission-essential, all of the PD that we had scheduled, I would consider essential. But if we really had to deal with this issue, we know that we need to remove the great majority of it. These mission-essential sessions are very limited. I believe I can cite three that we have kept, eliminating all others or offering asynchronous opportunities. We're asking our presenters to go back, create slideshows that are narrated, and to offer through our SchoolG platform opportunities for staff to do these when they are able to do them, on their time, during their plan, rather than taxing with subs. I want you to recognize as well that Dr. Spence is not stopping there. He has asked his central support staff to engage in vetting several other options to mitigate the substitute issue and to provide relief for teachers. I am hopeful at our next meeting, I can share with you at least one that we're planning on implementing shortly. At this time, I'd like to take any questions that you might have.
Thank you, and we'll begin with Mrs. Anderson.
Thank you. I think pausing the PLC is a good step right now. It serves two purposes. One is the teachers will have a little bit more personal planning time. And then, of course, you won't have to worry about getting a substitute in the classroom when the teacher is out for the PLC. I know you just now alluded to other options. Has there been any consideration given to possibly having an early dismissal so that our teachers can have a little bit of relief on planning? I don't want you to tip your hat, but has there been any discussion or thought that way? I know some other school divisions are doing that because teachers tend to be, they're just having a tough time right now. And the word I'm getting is that they are very stressed right now. They're feeling like it's May, not October. And I guess part of it has to do with, there's a lot more challenges because students are behind and they're having to come up with different ways to meet the needs. But I just, I hope you will give some thought to this. That's one of the things that I know that some other school divisions are doing right now. And so I just want to put that thought out there. And anything that we can do to relieve any stress that these teachers are feeling right now, not just teachers, bus drivers are feeling it too because they're working double duty, they're doing double loads in some cases. And they need as much time as possible, too. So I know that in some cases, they're even challenged on having bathroom breaks between, you know, having to run in. In one particular, I already spoke to Mr. Freeman about one particular bus driver who apparently was turned down about entering our building and couldn't get in, found out that that shouldn't have happened and that that bus driver should have been allowed to get in there and have a 10-minute bathroom break between a run. So hopefully, there's word out there now that that shouldn't have happened again if a bus driver needs to go. But we also need to pay attention to our teachers and how come they're feeling this stress so early in the year, so.
Mrs. Anderson, oh, forgive me, nothing is off the table. We are having discussions about all options and looking at solutions. And those are ongoing, and we're actively engaged in them. I do want to take a moment, just I think you erroneously stated PLCs rather than PL, professional learning. Note that our PLCs are still meeting. They're a critical part of teacher planning and beneficial to teachers as they share in the load of planning.
But professional learning during the day?
Yes, that is what we have paused. But nothing is off the table in terms of solutions. We are all working on that actively right now.
Okay, thank you.
Probably also worth mentioning, we have an upcoming meeting of the Teacher Assembly. And so this is the topic for discussion with our Teacher Assembly at the next meeting.
Okay.
So we'd really like to work with our teaching staff on driving some solutions to their challenges. And we think that'll help inform our next conversation with you all.
Thank you.
Okay, Mrs. Manning, then Mrs. Hughes.
Dr. Soltner, I love pausing the professional learning. Do you have, can you give me any idea of how many hours this is going to free up for us, of average?
I cannot give you that average, but I will certainly get it to you tomorrow. There is such an extensive offering of both optional and required pages and pages. We are only looking at doing this, and I think I neglected to state this, until January 1, and we'll revisit it January 1. If circumstances have not changed, we'll continue.
Okay. And then my next question for you is, you gave us the number of September 30 enrollment on the division, and we were down 138 from last year. But I know that we were down significantly from last year from previous years. Could I get the number for September of 2019, September 30th, division enrollment? When you have the opportunity?
Certainly, yes, ma'am.
Thank you. And then a question for Mr. Freeman. I asked this question at the last board meeting, and you didn't have it yet. So I'm hoping you have it now. What type of testing are you going to be requiring for our athletes? Is it going to be the nasal swab, the saliva?
So I'd love to be able to answer that, but it's tomorrow at 4 o'clock because our meeting with Mako Medical. And then as soon as we get all the information together, I can get something out to the board.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's important to get it out to the public as well.
Yes, absolutely.
This is a concern of parents.
Yes.
They don't want their kids tested at all, but much less the nasal swab. So and then what is the cost to the division for the testing?
Zero.
Okay.
Yeah.
Who's paying for it?
The Virginia Department of Health threw a grant, fully funded, for the staffing and the materials.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Mrs. Hughes, then Mrs. Riggs.
So some of mine is about the vaccinating athletes, but one is about easing up teacher time. I, too, am glad that we're pausing the professional learning. And I'd like to find what other things we might be able to pause to allow them more time. I do not think we should be cutting into instructional time, though, with early dismissals or asynchronous days because those kinds of things are how the students got behind to start with. So I think using those as mitigations to try to give them more time is not going to be beneficial to the students. But I am all for pausing other extraneous things so that they have more time to plan. I guess that's not so much a question as it is a comment. But also, at the last meeting, I had asked what percentage of quarantine students later tested positive. And I didn't know if anybody had that information yet.
Mr. Freeman, are you able to answer that?
So the question is, what percentage of quarantine students later tested positive?
Yes.
So I will double-check with our epidemiologist to provide that. So the total number of positive cases that we've transmitted in schools is 31. We'll get you what the actual percentage is. I want to make sure we check with our epidemiologist to make sure that we're not missing anything just off the data.
I'm concerned that we're spending a lot of time quarantining healthy students who are missing a lot of instructional time. And this is part of what is burdening teachers when they're not sick. So I'm trying to figure out if this is actually productive for us. I mean, there seems to be so much quarantining, but I think that we're probably not getting those percentages because they're. those percentages, because they're really, really low, that we're quarantining children who are not sick.
That is not the case. What you just implied is we're not sharing data with you that we have at the moment, because we're concerned with what the results are. I take exception to that. We'll get you the data. I want to make sure that we check with our epidemiologists first. Saw the data on the slide, 31 students have been identified as a in-school transmission, but I want to make sure that we're not just taking data off of our slide and missing something. And that's what epidemiologists do. That's why I want to check with them first.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Mrs. Riggs, Ms. Owens, and I'll note that it's 5:30, so after these two, we'll see if we're going to wrap up or continue this workshop later.
Real quick, I just wanted to mention the fact about the substitutes and the huge challenge. I've been talking to many teachers this week about that huge challenge and the things that they've been asked to do, because you're trying all kinds of, you know, innovative ways to make sure you have somebody in the classroom with them, even to the point where, you know, teachers are being asked to go cover a room while they have a planning time or, you know, maybe not their lunch, but a free time to go do it. So I know that's being done as well, because you are in need of substitutes. I'd even asked Dr. Robertson this morning, I said, I know this is probably unacceptable, but there's several of us that have our teacher's license. I would love to be able to go into a classroom and help with the substituting, because it has been so, so bad. I mean, I've heard it from many teachers just this week, just in the last couple of days.
You are acknowledging a reality that we are keenly aware of and are working for some solutions.
Right, and I do want to say that it's going to hurt the students. If they don't have, I know it hurts students, and there was, you know, there was loss of instruction, but there was a lot of grade instruction that was done in these past year and a half with COVID and the virtual instruction. Some instruction that some kids have never seen or ever will see, because teachers have that opportunity to plan and do that. I don't think there's anything off the table to help with the planning and with getting this done, so I'm open to whatever is suggested from our teacher forum and our teachers. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Riggs.
Ms. Owens?
Okay, yep, and I will be as brief as possible. I'm also looking forward to hearing what comes out of the teacher forum. I do think that we need to keep all options on the table. I'm not in love with the idea of the early dismissal situation, and I acknowledge what Ms. Hughes was mentioning about wanting to have as much in-person instructional time as possible, but I also understand that it's a balancing act between, perhaps we do need to look at one asynchronous day per month to allow for the additional prep, the additional things that there's just not time for currently, because when we're balancing the loss of that face-to-face time with the loss of quality instruction that we are dealing with when teachers leave, when they have to take mental health days because they can't do it, or because they're taking FMLA, or because they're leaving the profession, the amount of experience that we've had leave our district over the last year and a half, we have to find where the balance is with that. So I'm open to whatever things we need to look at. My other, I guess, question is in regards to the contact tracing numbers. I understand that we are definitely doing the best we can, and there's things going on in the community. Is there a concern? I see that the, like, the community numbers are trending downward, but I may be reading these wrong, but it looks like our in-school numbers are trending upward while the community is trending downward. Is that incorrect? Am I reading it wrong?
So, I'm sorry, I was just getting an update from Ms. Suwala about our, from our epidemiologist. Can you repeat the question, just so I make sure?
Sure. So I'm seeing the community transmission rates and positivity trending downward from the VDH page, but then when I'm looking at where we are within our division from the numbers we got last meeting, it looks like our numbers are not trending downwards and perhaps trending upwards, where we have, just since our last meeting, doubled the amount of connected cases. We have, you know, the student positives went from 302 to 530 in two weeks, and so is there something that we need to be more concerned about if we're not trending the same way as the community?
Yeah, so just understand that this is a high-level summary of what we're experiencing, and the numbers that you see on the slide are total numbers from September 1st. Whereas what you see is a trend week to week on the Virginia Beach, the Virginia Department of Health slide. So we saw end of September was our highest numbers in a lot of categories, and then it has come down a little bit over the weeks since then. It is probably what I would call more stable than, it's decreasing but stable and decreasing. And that likely reflects the time that we brought kids into school and started monitoring data, because it's about, you know, two to three weeks where the numbers come up, and then we've seen a decreasing trend since, over the last two weeks. And when I say decreasing trend, I don't want to share that as a broad decrease, but to your question of, does this data show that we're going up when Virginia Department of Health data shows that we're going down? That's not the case. This was intended to be a high-level status of total numbers.
Okay, and I probably can just, I guess, arrange to sit with Nurse Suwala or somebody from the team, because I'm looking at the numbers that we've been getting emailed from the last two weeks, and then the numbers here, and I can't make that make sense as far as like the number of positive students from 302 to 530 in the two weeks, but like on our chart, I'm only seeing like 100 new positives. So it might be I need to sit down and just understand where the numbers are.
And moving forward, so our intention tonight was to be able to show something more graphic on a chart for you, but given the need to be able to get the presentation ready to go and not have any flaws with the data that we had in there, we needed to share it at a high level for this time around. Moving forward, we intend to be able to show more trends over time, but I didn't want to share data that gets contested because the data wasn't accurate.
Understood, and we can sit down at some point outside of here, so just so I can understand. Probably the cutoff dates for the numbers on this one compared to the reports that we get.
Okay, sounds good.
Thank you.
I may take this time to follow up to the question that was asked earlier.
I think from Ms. Owens, she's going to follow up with you, all right?
No, from the question about the total number of cases. The number that you asked for is 3.2, so Ms. Suwala is sitting with our epidemiologist right now. They're not able to join via Zoom, but they did here, and they passed on that that number is 3.2%. Again, I didn't have a chance to be able to go through and gather exactly how they got that, but 3.2% is what they reported based on your question.
So of all of the students that have been quarantined, 3.2% have actually had COVID?
Developed symptoms following, yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, it looks like we're ready to wrap up. Thank you very much. And this workshop is adjourned, and we'll reconvene for formal meeting at 6 o'clock.